Great. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, gentlemen, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Is there a motion in proven minutes from last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, gentlemen, before we get started tonight, we have a presentation for Senator George Edwards, our longtime senator. Welcome, thank you for coming tonight. His wife Linda's with him. Getting to see government in action. He's been seeing government in action for a long time. So if you would come on up here, we do have a small proclamation for you. This is an official proclamation from Allegheny County Government, and it reads, whereas George Clayton Edwards was born in Grantsville, Maryland, attended Northern High School, received a bachelor's degree in business administration from Fairmont State University, and was drafted by the Baltimore Colts, received a teaching certificate from Frostburg State University, and served in the National Guard for six years. Senator Edwards began his public service career in 1972, when he was elected to the Grantsville Town Council. He was elected to the Garrett County Commission in 1974, the House of Delegates in 1982, and entered the Senate on January 10th, 2007. Senator Edwards' service over the last 50 years has been distinguished by his fierce representation of Western Maryland, and he's been a champion for our region and held several key positions in the General Assembly, including Minority Leader, Chairman of the Senate Executive Nominations Committee, and the Senate Chair of the Joint Committee on Ethics. Key changes to the state legislature benefiting Western Maryland have been made thanks to Senator Edwards. He was instrumental in altering a revenue formula that determines how much a county receives when the state owns 15% or more of the acreage. Spearheaded changes, Maryland's Open Space Program, and other legislative changes that can be directly tied to Senator Edwards include changes in the rules governing Western Maryland's timber industry, increasing the speed limit on sections Interstate 68, 70 miles per hour, negotiating with the state DNR, and funneling more revenues from Rocky Gap Casino Resort Allegheny County Government, working to exempt communities in Western Maryland whose wastewater doesn't empty into the Chesapeake from the state's second flush tax, and preserving the annual black bear hunt in Western Maryland. Senator Edwards' hard work, talent, leadership have been essential in the growth of Western Maryland, and his strong commitment to our region and humble nature has earned him significant respect from colleagues and friends. He's been described as easygoing, likable, ethical, full of integrity, influential, and wise. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, hereby issue this proclamation to Senator Edwards in recognition for his many achievements and extend our sincerest gratitude and appreciation for his many years of public service on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County. Senator, thank you so much for everything.
Who wrote that?
Creed.
Yeah, that sounds like something I wrote.
Thank you all very much. Glad to find someone to lighten up some of these meetings that I won't be at because I was the guy to lighten them up. But I'm leaving here going Frostburg State to flip the coin at the beginning of the game between FSU and FSU at FSU. So I really appreciate it, and I've enjoyed over the years working with you all here and those before you here, trying to get things done for the people of Mountain Maryland. I think we've done a lot over those 40 years, and a few things yet to come that I think will be really good, with some of you are involved in some bills we passed this year that are going to probably put a big imprint on Mountain Maryland and help out our constituents to get some good jobs and get some businesses and industries here, keep them here and expand them. But we all got to work together, so I hope to keep in touch and to hopefully find something to help me keep fighting for Mountain Maryland. So thank you all very much. Good luck to you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
And just, you know, on a personal note, thank you for everything you've done. Allegheny High School would not be there without Senator Edwards' just tireless commitment. And, you know, you're not from Allegheny County, but you might as well have been. You know, you're an adopted citizen, and I can't think of anyone who's had a bigger impact politically or on government than has just been a great role model for everyone in elected office for a long time.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have something else?
I was going to say that I was glad not to speak at their retirement party. What do you say to someone who's dedicated 50 years of service to you? How do you thank them for that? Maybe I would have said that, you know, we all have always looked up to you. I couldn't think of anyone better setting an example for anybody in public service to follow. So all of us, you know, we're going to continue using the example you had set for us, honor, honesty, respect, and hard work, and we'll miss you. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Creed?
Well, sir, I have, I'm not very good at this, but I really consider you my mentor. You've been my most trusted person since I've been in office for 12 years, and I would like to continue that relationship. A lot of people don't realize a lot of these things is named. Rocky Gap was dead in the water without you. And I would certainly look forward, because I'm not big on public stuff, to running into you at the council one afternoon for lunch.
Or Rocky Gap.
Or Rocky Gap. I've said this all along, you was one of the very few people that I've trusted in government, and I can say after serving you with 12 years, I still have the utmost trust and respect for you, and I'm glad to say that I was able to serve when you served.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we do, I almost forgot.
Key to the city.
No.
Key to the county.
No, we're not renaming anything. Listen, this is a small gift, Rocky Gap, it's a two-night stay out there, so after you're out of elected office, take advantage. Small thank you from Allegheny County Government. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. See you soon.
Item number two, this is Economic Development Week 2022. Mr. Jeff Barkley's here, Mr. Nathan Price. Oh, just Jeff.
Yes. I didn't realize Nathan had a prior date, so I can take care of this. Good evening, Commissioners, and definitely congratulations, Senator, again. Yes, so we put this on the agenda, Economic Development Week for the state of Maryland is actually next week, October 24th through the 28th, and we can keep it short and sweet. It's really just, you know, something that's charged to all the counties and the state to issue a proclamation to give recognition and give an opportunity for celebration as well. And I know for this year's proclamation, we basically have identified that, or have Rocky Gap on the brain now, the FedEx distribution warehouse was a huge project for us this past year, and I'm proud to say that I've actually seen the occupancy permits for the place, and I'll be doing a memo to our county administrator Bennett there, you know, authorizing that they've gotten their occupancy permit. We've got to cut loose a little bit of incentive, but I mean, I think that's a great thing to celebrate. And just for everyone to keep in mind that next week again is Economic Development Week for Allegheny County and the rest of the state, we'll send the proclamation to MEDA Association, and they'll, you know, they post them all on their website for everybody.
Yeah. Tremendous, Jeff. I mean, the biggest building in Allegheny County since 2004, and they did it in less than a year.
Yeah, they really got after, you know, 193,000 square feet, $38 million project, probably another $10.5 million personal property on the inside, state of the art.
Kind of reminds me of the sheriff's house.
Yeah.
Let's do it again this year, huh, Jeff?
Yeah, we've still got things in the pipeline that's keeping moving.
Great. Well, Jeff, we have a small proclamation if you'd like to come up too.
Yeah.
Congratulations on that, constituents. Smooth.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say, you don't have to read this verbatim, paraphrase.
Well, I know, you already took all my talking points here. All right. This one reads, "The Allegheny County Department of Economic and Community Development is an active member of Maryland Economic Development Association, the DECD, works to retain and grow existing businesses and attract new entities as well as workforce development initiatives. These actions have led to an increase in the tax base, enhance the quality of life in Allegheny County, and FedEx Ground, a subsidiary of FedEx Corporation, is in the process of expanding their existing operations and footprint in Allegheny County. FedEx Ground will relocate to a new 193,000 square foot facility located on Route 51 adjacent to the North Branch Industrial Park. In accordance completion before the end of 2022, FedEx Ground partnered with Allegheny County to make this project possible. It represents 38 million in direct investment and considerable growth to an existing employee base. That's why we, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County proclaim October 24th to 28th as Economic Development Week and ask all residents to join the same. Congratulations."
Thank you.
Okay, moving to our action agenda tonight, we got an electric supply contract. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, Chris, I'm a county partner, the county partnered with the city of Cleveland, state of Frostburg, the Vale Cemetery Commission, and we provide services and tradition energy to publicly bid our energy supply contract for a period of 24 months, and we began on November 1st. Just this afternoon, we received a low bid from Three Point Energy, and the price of a kilowatt hour is .09295, and this would be applied to 16 accounts that we have, and that is some of our highest used accounts since the center, some of our pump stations which were treated. So we expect to see a pretty good savings by applying this energy contract over the next 24 months. Question here, permission to go ahead and sign the contract?
We like contracts that save us money, sir.
Do we know how much we're saving out?
We won't, because the way the pandemic goes and they'll read, they show you the electricity for the next six months, and they did it out again. My early conjectures for our next six months, we were going to be 11 cents per kilowatt hour.
Gotcha.
It's a very good rate, that's really good.
We're just locking in long term. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Okay, item four is River Park Engineering. Mr. Barkley.
Thank you, Commissioners. What you have here is, we're seeking the board's approval for, to advance $70,000 from revolving building fund to be paid to a canal place authority approved contractor to work on engineering and a cost study for the River Park project. What's basically happened here is the critical path to do things forward with this is the engineering for the project, and Canal Place did do an application for EDA funding on the tourism side, there's some pot of money there for $250,000. The thought was it would be about $400,000 to pay the project costs. The county pledged to do $100,000, so the county was going to do $50,000 to get to the ride to the $400,000. The EDA has taken a very, very long time. It's, we still haven't heard back, and the problem is that since there was $6 million earmarked by Congressman Trune for part of that project, we need to get some answers before the end of the calendar year. So that's why we've done some meetings, and we've agreed to advance $70,000 of the $100,000 that we pledged, so that we could at least get the numbers that Congressman Trune needs to push forward on, you know, keep those earmarks intact.
Okay, great. It's a very important project. I think the county's supportive of it, and we're willing to be a partner to help make that a reality, because I think it would be transformational. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, let's move up the river a little bit for the Riverside Industrial Park Loan Agreement.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We are looking for, and of course, attorney being, and we jumped in here and gone, we've been working on this quite a bit with our attorney, our bond counsel, with Maryland Commerce, and of course, representatives of the Attorney General's Office on getting an agreement together. Basically, what's happened is we originally had a $2.5 million investment agreement with Commerce for the building, and because we've had folks, you know, valid businesses, Broer West, and Miller's Recycling wanted to end up, you know, doing lease purchases and owning their buildings, we had to basically get a lien released from the building, and we did that sometime ago. And for doing, you know, as part of that, we had to pay a million dollars to get that done. So basically, what this does, you know, this is the leftover 1.5 million that we're taking from the investment agreement and applying it to this loan agreement with them for 1.5 million. The upside is, is I was able to negotiate a forgiveness of the 1.5 million over 10 years, as long as, and we can get the $150,000 forgiven each year, as long as they maintain 100 employees back there between the two businesses. So it's good to get this clock started, so we can start getting forgiveness of the principal.
Very good.
Very good. Long time coming.
Yes.
Long time coming.
Hard fight too, wasn't it, sir?
Yes, yes, yes. All right, gentlemen, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We're knocking everything out tonight. We're making progress.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, moving to our consent agenda. Mr. Bennett?
Commissioners, you'll keep going quick, because there's only four items tonight. So item six is Scattered Sites Housing Program. This would be to accept an offer of $50,000 from Tanya Kaufman and Elias Wilkinson Jr. for 121 Arch Street to continue our sell-off of those properties. Item seven is the 2023-2025 Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant acceptance in the amount of $5,000, and this would modify Budget 1440 to reflect the grant. Item eight is Mental Health Advisory Board Appointment of Keith Arnold. He will be fulfilling a vacant position, and his term will expire June 30th, 2025. And item nine is an Allegheny County Commission for Women Board Appointment of Melanie Chapman. Her term will expire July 1st, 2025.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Two things, Commissioners. One, I'd also like to congratulate Senator Edwards. I had the fortune to get to work with him for the past, I think, eight years on the Rocky Gap Local Development Council. He was always trusted mentor on that, and always go to him for advice, and there was something in our proclamation that said humble. That's always him. You never knew he was one of the highest-ranking senators in the state of Maryland, because he never acted like it. He's always humble, so that's something we'll take forward and try to emulate. One other thing, if you could pass me that letter, if you don't mind, I have a letter to read into the record. Commissioners, as you know, our Board of Ed goes through a legislative audit once every six years. They went through one a couple years ago. They did better with it, they've improved, they've continued their financial and operational improvement over the years. They have an opportunity now to be exempted from the next one, but they need Commissioner support. So if you're okay, I'll read a letter into the record and ask for you to sign it. It's addressed to Marcia Alvarado. She's with the Maryland Department of Legislative Services, and it reads, "We, the Allegheny County Commissioners, are writing today to support an exemption for the Allegheny County Board of Education from the Maryland Office of Legislative Audits, next round of legislative audits beginning fiscal year 2023. We have had an outstanding relationship with our Board of Education, and they have dramatically improved both their finances and financial audit timing in recent years. Our intention with this request is to allow the staff at the Board of Education to be able to keep their focus on providing a quality education for our children as we continue our recovery from the pandemic without having to allocate time and resources to a legislative audit. We understand that this is the only opportunity to request an exemption for the next audit cycle, and that the Board of Education would not be eligible for exemption in the next audit cycle. We would be happy to answer any further questions you may have about this request. Thank you for your consideration." That would be for your signature, if you so choose.
Well, I will be fully supportive of that. You know, the relationship between the county and Board of Ed is night and day. It's so much better than what it was. The Board of Ed, they have everything done on time. You know, there was time when they weren't doing their financials in time, and the state was holding money, and we actually got dinged a few times, the county, because we couldn't do our reports. You know, we would fight over funding. That's all in the past, you know, and traditionally, in Allegheny County, the Board and the Commissioners didn't get along, and now we work very well together. So, you know, I would caution people, just be aware of that, you know? When you go vote, make sure it's people that are going to continue that good relationship and represent the community. You know, we work together, we put mental health counselors in all the schools, we work together on the school resource officers, Greenway, I mean, on and on and on. And so, you know, I think them being exempted from this very, very voluminous legislative audit is going to be fine, because they're doing everything that they need to be doing financially, and we see that every day. Okay, we don't need to vote on that, do we, Jason?
Nope, just signature if you want. It's a consensus.
Okay, very good. Mr. Beaman?
I'd like to join everyone congratulating Senator Edwards on his retirement, sir. It's been a pleasure working with you. I also, gentlemen, had the pleasure today of accompanying the sheriff to the Maryland Sheriff's Association meeting, and Sheriff Robertson's doing a wonderful job representing us throughout the state.
Great. Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Didn't see you back there. Any comments? Any comments, Sheriff? All right. Commissioner Caprell?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Commissioner Burden?
Sir, I'm good.
Okay. I will say, we had the honor of having ARC here this week. We had some governors from all over the country and ARC staff, a lot of them first time spending a long time in Allegheny County, and, you know, we heard again and again and again how beautiful it was and how much they loved our area, and, you know, they like what's going on here. So it's nice to hear that outside perspective. Thank you for everyone who was involved in that, to really make that a great, great event for the county. So, okay, we do have one person signed up to speak tonight, Carla Rigger.
Yeah, we'll pack a preview of everything to discuss. Hey, Jake. So, ladies and gentlemen, here's a preview. Honorable county commissioners, thank you for allowing me a short time to introduce myself in the subject of Allegheny County. I'm Maryland Governor and Attorney Organization, working all over the state to expose and clear a broken election system. Because of the short time I have to write down, it's really extremely short time we have left before the November 8th, I've included several documents and links for you all to review, and learn more about the big ways the ENS machines and Eric system and the mail-in ballot system have made Maryland the most corrupt state with the most absolute total amount of voter fraud. Maryland has, according to Dr. Douglas James, the forensic scientist, 1 million illegal voters on the rolls at this time. We owe the overwhelming proof of Maryland machine fraud to Michael Dell Forensic Team, attorneys and communications and experts, to Douglas James, the forensic scientist and IT expert, and to TrueTheVote.org and Dinesh D'Souza for their exposé of exactly how the illegal fake mail and ballots are dumped into the poll boxes. According to the Lindell Forensic Team using the cast vote records, Allegheny County has a total of 2,376 votes that were given to Biden and taken away from Trump. There's a graph in your papers that has every county, and it shows the true vote and the lie vote, and how many, and there are thousands and thousands of these frames, but I see how that are, we know how to roll through the Eric system. There is also a disparity of 352 votes that showed up on the ballots but not the CBRs. According to the other evidence from the Lindell team, there were also 406 votes that were illegal, meaning that person did not reside at the address or some other irregularity. In your packet are the following proof information for your review. What is a cast vote record? That's the most first important thing, and what I've given you there is the information that is requested when you ask for a cast vote record. It is this form right here, right here. I think visual the information. We're very lucky, because Michael Dell used Maryland as his example during his exposés, and so you can go and I put the links on the link sheet, you can go right to his pages and find not only the 2020, but the fact that our primary was also passed, and we just presently showing you how that was done. Four pages, this is it, four pages of the Maryland primary governor's, including Allegheny County results showing the algorithms used by the machines to change or add votes. They are the ones with the little diagrams to pass the cast vote. They are in color, and they look like a graph. They look like this. So what we have here, and I'm not sure how this turned out, but the one that looks like this, this one, this is the Democrat governor in Allegheny County. Francho won, but if you can look down here, this is where the algorithms start, and the first thing they do is they make everybody even, and then they start displaying the votes where they want them. In our county, there was really, everybody wanted Francho, so they didn't have, they could not really use the algorithm. I really believe that Kelly was expected to win in Maryland using the algorithms. Then you go to the Frederick County GOP, and it looks like this, this one. And you can see that every time Cox, who won, had got votes, everybody else got votes as well. And when they algorithm, that's a choice that everybody had an exact space of class. That is not a normal race. It's funny, that's Frederick County. This one is Allegheny County, and one hand over here, and so the algorithms didn't even have a chance. It tried a good inning, it tried to keep Kelly, would have failed miserably. And that is really how we're going to overturn this, everybody get out and vote and overturn the power. This one is the funniest one, and I put this in here because this shows beyond, this is the Democrat governor race total, and you can see, the one at the top is blue, which is Westmore. If you can see, they began to give, you have it right there, gave in front of you, in your packet, it's all, you can look at them very carefully. These are made according to the cast vote records, which means the people can, this is how they were voted. This was not the way they were displayed by some organization. This is longer than long. They gave them so many votes that when you didn't get them, they had to actually take them away. You see this? You see that? It's in your paper. That is the funniest one. I do not personally agree that Westmore won, I believe who's the plan. And so, you know, this is just hilarious, and I don't have to solve that, that's hilarious. And that is really the rough county in Maryland, these races are getting. If you go to the link that I gave you, Maba Raccoon is part of Michael Dell's group, he's a wonderful guy, they took all of our, we were very fortunate, there is a repo case against our ENS machines, they against our E S machines being prepared, and those attorneys worked with Mike Lindell's people and our Maryland Boil Integrity, and were able to get every single county's cast vote records. So we have every single county, how they voted for the top five, four or five people in the primaries, as well as the 2020. Let's move back. So you have four pages of that, then you have the graph from the Lindell team that I was telling you about, and that has a list of the counties, how many actually voted, truly voted for Biden and Trump, and how many was reported. And in every single county, there were discrepancies. And that's, you can find that, it's just in the middle of the page. Looks like this, it's not a way to write that. And so, and you can see here, and this also will show that the computer IPs that were controlling these machines came from all over the world. There's Australia, France, Canada, Taiwan, Australia, Japan, Switzerland, Germany, that's just in Maryland. The double check program, which is something we're going to try to push, that, and that is, we're trying to utilize that. I just found out today that the Maryland Board of Elections has discounted it, does not want it, and will not support us, does not mean we cannot use it in our own county. And I'll explain what that is. The info from the people, leader people of Maryland, in their best paper at the end there, they have asked Hartford County to do a hand count, as well as a full audit on this election. We also have a press release from Anna Rundell Local Board, calling for an empty use of machines, requesting a hand count the day after November 8th. So we're not alone. Also Baltimore County, and I have to say that Baltimore County GOP women are really the ones that got out and did canvassing around the state and found so many irregularities that we know that there are at least four counties that there were phantom voters, more voters added to the rolls than actually new county accounts. That was Frederick, Frederick, Anna Rundell, Hartford, Hartford, and I can't remember the other one, is Carol, but they have really taken the lead on this, and we're very blessed to have them, because this is very complicated. I have a concussion, and I can tell you, I don't understand all of that, I have to go over and over and over. So in conclusion, I've only scratched the surface of the election fraud in Maryland and of Allegheny County. I ask the Commissioners to read, review, and understand what has happened in 2020 and in our 2022 primary race. If we do not stop using machines, it will be repeated again. Also, we will stop using the Eric system that directly allows the mail-in and early voting ballots to be dumped, and which hundreds of thousands of fake votes to the states total. My request to you is to withdraw the use of the E S and S machines by mandating paper ballots for all voters, and further to prove that the machines will be using these algorithms to change our votes, I ask for a hand count of the paper ballots immediately after the polls close and no later than November 9th. Europe refuses to use these machines. They use only paper ballots in Europe, and not only do they have an election, they count the ballots, and by the evening, they know who won. Surely, our country can do as well. Thank you for allowing me to speak. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them now.
Ms. Rigger, I appreciate, we corresponded by email. Appreciate you providing this information to the Commissioners, but the Commissioners have no input, no ability to influence the type of voting machines that are used, the voting procedures. Those are all set by the Maryland State Board of Elections, which the county Commissioners have no authority over. So while we appreciate you presenting everything, there is no action that we can take on this.
It's my understanding, I think, that every county decides how its voting is going to be.
That's not correct, ma'am.
That's what Mike Lindell's are working all over the country, counting by county, to do this.
In the state.
You know, the states are not going to be.
In the state of Maryland, ma'am, the State Board of Elections has the power and the duty to control how elections are operated. They supervise the local Board of Elections, but those are also state, those are also state employees under the State Board of Elections. They're not employees or under any control of the county Commissioners. So what you're asking the Commissioners to do is something that they have no authority to do.
And I think, excuse me, you know, we hear so much about stuff locally. Allegheny County's elections are fair. You know, they're run by volunteers, they're run by people who live in this community. You know, there's not, there's not, our elections aren't fraudulent. You know, it's part of our foundation of you have free and fair elections, and some people win, some people lose. And, you know, I'm very concerned when you, when you, when the legitimacy of that's taken away, it really strips away at our democracy, you know? And we have an election coming up, and I encourage everyone to get out and vote, and vote for their candidate, but the day after, there's going to be some winners, there's going to be some losers, and, you know, we move forward and run the government like that.
I appreciate that, Shane, but that's not the proof that I just gave you. The machines, we're not saying the volunteers of the other county or incoming, unless they are not at fault. They are told what to do, they're given a manual, they're told what to do with these machines. They, people who run the machines come in, reprogram them right before the elections, reprogram them right after the elections to erase all the evidence, and that's why the paper ballots count must be done right after the election, before they have a chance to come in and do that. I've given you the links, it's on that page, you can go right there, you can look up every state, you can look up every county, and you can see the evidence that they have, they have, you know, determined. And there is not a state or a county in our country that these machines have not hacked. And I just showed you how that also hacked our primaries. They are now heading to the point that they want to control who's even running in the counties and the local states on the state level. And that was discovered when they had a Georgia County Commissioner race, and the machines said that this one candidate won, and the GOP candidate came in last. They asked for the current hand count, and it was reversed. The hand count showed that the woman won, and the other guy lost. We know what's happening. I just gave you the information, and on this, on the sheet, right here, I'll be glad to get copies of anybody who wants this. You can look up the evidence yourself. So whatever power you have, I know the one important thing is that we need to encourage people to use the paper ballots. That is because somehow, when they even run them through the machines, the machines will change the vote before it is even counted. But once you keep that paper ballot, that the person knows what they, that we can count how many votes were actually done, and every single time that's been done, the machines were wrong. So this is, to me, this is our most important life and death election for our country. And I'll just ask you to review what I'm told to, watch Dr. Frank's presentation, watch Mike Lindell, he did 24, 48 hours of this, but they did use Maryland as an example, and clearly show how Maryland is, he said Maryland has .999% the most corruption in its voter, in its voter. So, and I have a concussion, so I can't get into it much more. I put everything here, I just pray you will look at it, let your conscience be your guide, and whether we can talk to our election board people, but I feel like we need to do something to be a beacon in this state, because we are smaller, we do control more. If you look at that graph, that one table, you can see, like in Baltimore County, 25,000 phantom votes. They did not come out the way that the machines said. That's a lot of votes, and that's not even the highest. Well, thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, Thursday, November 17th, 5 o'clock. See you then.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Take care.